It is now six o'clock and we are starting the May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Can we call for roll, please?
Yes, it's gonna be.
Oh, I'm sorry, I need to, do I need to say that we have enough for a quorum? Or? We do.
We do.
But I didn't know if I needed to announce that, being that we're so small tonight. Okay, sorry.
Okay. Ishmael Harris.
Here.
David Barrow, absent. Uh, Gary Moss. Patrice Parsons. Keith Auburn. Joshua Bingaman. And then we have Ashley Henson and Jordan Scott that are also not here.
Thank you, Alondra. All right. On to item agenda two, citizen comments. We don't have any, so we will move on to items three A. Consider action to approve minute, meeting minutes from the May ninth, two thousand twenty-four Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to accept as written.
I accept.
We have a motion and a second. Give them a call for roll, please.
Yes, Gary Moss.
Yes.
Uh, Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Keith Auburn.
Yes.
Joshua Bingaman. And Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
And?
Can we let the record show that Jordan has arrived?
Jordan has arrived.
Do we need to revote since he arrived? Or he was at the tail end of it, right? So, okay, we're good to go. All right. That item three A passes unanimously. Onto item four, workshop presented by Mr. Resin.
Yes, um, today we're gonna be going through kind of the high level basics of what the Planning and Zoning Commission was built for and how it is used throughout the city and just overall training, just for our benefit and truly my benefit as well, just to kind of refresh and make sure we're up to date on some of the issues that we are facing or will be facing here in the future. So, um, as you all may know, you may not know, some of you are new, proper introduction is warranted. My name is Resin Pullum, work for the Borquez Law Firm, which is effectively the legal team that you guys have elected to go with. Graduated from Texas Southern University with my law degree and University of Houston, go Cougs. Support them with all my might and pride. Uh, you see a little bit of my experience and how I've come to be involved in this role here as Assistant City Attorney. Today, what we're going to talk about and touch on are quite a lot of topics, um, but just an agenda for you guys to say, you know, really talking about the players and roles that are involved in the city decisions and which planning and zoning is engaged in. Best practices on process, you know, kind of what we see out there, what we advise as legal counsel, uh, the tools that are available to you. Um, a short discussion on the city limits and ETJ and the authority that we have and we're observing, as well as some of the changes that are happening in the legal field as far as what the legislator is doing and the kind of trend they're taking towards the city's ETJ authority. We'll also talk about comprehensive plans. Uh, you guys are getting ready to embark on that whole journey. It's going to be a good one, a long one and thorough one. Hopefully that brings a little bit more clarity to what are the things that we want? What are the intent of certain uses, industries and just overall planning and development as it relates to BASHRAF and its future. Um, obviously zoning clearly in the name, but we're gonna touch on some of those topics. Um, the regulatory authority available to us and just how we go about doing the process. Again, more of what development process consists of, which is subdivision, Platts, site development, a little bit on building codes and then touching on some hot topics such as signs and grandfathering to close it on out. So first we start with the public realm, which is essentially the players that are, I would say, on our side. Uh, it includes obviously the boards and commissions, uh, citizens, the city staff and, um, all of those special districts such as, you know, school districts, um, sometimes even muds or whatever else is created that has the public centric ideology behind them and engagement as well. Really, the ideal is for all of these people to really align and to have some of those same characters and, um, just ideals about the growth and the development of the city. Whenever those things do align, you tend to see a lot smarter and, um, paced development as opposed to something that is more rushed, something that, you know, really destroys what is the character and intent of the city. On the other side of that, obviously, is the dark side, that is the private players. Um, no, really though, they have a lot of real power. One, because they are not so constrained by some of the governmental, um, aspects that we have to observe, such as, you know, statutory law and how we go about doing certain processes such as noticing and getting the citizens involved. But those consist of like your developers, your realtor teams, uh, the contractors, other engineers, um, sometimes even consultants for those owners and property developers. Essentially, um, they can dictate how the city goes about developing and how we even see things as a whole and how we interact because they are essentially kind of the vehicle or the worksmen that are providing these, uh, elements of development that we're looking to add to our city. So in a lot of ways, we do have to cooperate with them and them with us whenever going into these deals and negotiating how we best move forward with the planning and zoning of the city of BASHRAF. Uh, just kind of a review slide of who some of the key and important city staff are that go into that public realm. This just further shows, uh, you know, who's all on board and some of the people that you can reach out to. For sure, the last person on that list, which is myself, I encourage you guys, if you do have any questions that come about, that you're thinking about legally, that you pass them off to me as well as letting staff know that these are questions that you have or that you've asked. And we all will work together, hopefully as a well-oiled machine, to give and deliver you the information that you need to make your informed decisions. I will not understate the importance of the role of staff. They have probably one of the most important roles in the process because they do a lot of the groundwork. They are the legs to a lot of these transactions. Um, you know, they evaluate the codes, analyze the projects, the feasibility and suitability of these certain developments that are coming into the certain areas or zones of the city of BASHRAF. And, you know, they filter through the wants, the, uh, absolute must haves and even the desires of the council, the bores and, uh, the citizens especially for the city of BASHRAF. Really, um, they are the ones that go through the process every day, that have to work through the codes, both statutory and the ones that we've adopted in our ordinances. And they really make sure that the land use and development processes are adhered to. So without those staff to really implement that, you're, you're kind of left at odds when it comes to really knowing what you're considering and what is available to you as options whenever you're going into these negotiations. As you all know, we meet, uh, every Thursday, last Thursday of the month. Um, recently, we've decided we're going to start meeting every other Thursday due to us wanting to do the comprehensive plan and get that more thoroughly vetted and, and ran through so that we're taking our time and not just rushing once a month to try to finish so much of a, a big undertaking. Um, one of the more important things that we end up having to do here with this commission is the public hearings, especially ones that are regarding the zoning map amendments and zoning text amendments. You all will see a lot of those and I can imagine there'll be quite a few that are gonna be coming up in the near future just to address some of the common issues that, uh, we, the city staff are seeing, as well as some of those that we're identifying with, um, some of the developers and other key stakeholders that are coming into the city. Uh, you obviously deal with a lot of subdivision, um, as far as Platts, that, that comes here and other aspects of the development process. So getting into what is the role of the P and Z? Well, first, the P and Z is established by statutory law and is also covered in both our city charter and our code. Um, it is required in home rule cities and the key is to effectively and efficiently administrate and implement those codes, those regulations in which we have adopted that guide smart and good development. Um, a lot of times you may find yourself seeming as though you're only offering feedback, but you really do have a lot of power in the considerations that you make. Um, and being an advisor of sorts of seeing these projects, um, yes.
I have a stupid question. What's a home rule city?
Oh, yeah, I'm glad you asked that. That's a huge, uh, huge topic that we should all know and cover. Home rule city describes the type of city that you are currently, uh, operating in and what it allows for. If you are a home rule city, which has certain requirements for the number of inhabitants that you have and as well as passing and creating a charter, you're allowed to do and have a lot more regulations as far as what you can and cannot control as opposed to what is a general law city. A general law city can only enact and have regulations that are based in statute and provided by the Texas legislator. Whereas with a home rule city, you have a charter in which we've all voted on and given the power to the city to enact certain things. So generally, a, a, a home rule city has more power, more, uh, regulation authority than what would a general law city. Yeah.
Sorry, we've got some people on this dais up here that are hard to hearing besides me. Sorry.
Well, we're, we're being recorded, so the people.
I'm sorry.
Need to hear it in the audience.
I wasn't being smart aleck. So, to become a home rule city, you, you pass a charter and you do that by the citizens?
Well, one of the requirements for that is to have a certain level of inhabitants and I believe it's more than five thousand inhabitants in the city. And you have to meet that population threshold before you're even allowed to consider a charter and pass that to become a home rule city. So the kind of levels, if there were, you first, you start out as a general law city, either type A, B, or C. And those have to go straight to the legislative codes, like the local government code.
Got it.
Just the government code, property code, to get its authority to act on certain things. Whereas with a, once you get to that population threshold and you meet the requirements for becoming a home rule city, you have more authority within your own charter and your own making and rulings.
Last question. Who approves the charter?
So the citizens approve the charter. It's actually put up for an election. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. So getting further on into just kind of talking about the responsibilities in front of you or as this commission, uh, you can see there's quite a few things that you regularly find yourself, uh, reviewing and looking at. Includes subdivision Platts, site plan appeals, uh, zoning map amendments, both for the actual map and for the text of the zoning ordinance. Uh, sometimes you'll see, uh, SUPs come by, uh, PDDs, development agreements, all of those which are vehicles for, that assist with, uh, how future development and growth is actually accomplished. And then you have these bevy of planning and land use tools at your behest. Um, at the very top, you see the comprehensive plan. That is because it is a large document that takes time to really kind of map out and understand how the city wants to move forward and what are the things that it really cares about. Um, the comprehensive plan includes things such as transportation, uh, your parks and open space, uh, regulations, you know, um, even going further, I believe, into your public spaces, uh, utilities and all the things that would necessarily need to go into a project to make it functional in a part of the city. Other tools which normally are used or that may not necessarily be up here, as I said, um, development agreements, planned development districts, which we, uh, have seen quite a few of, and SUPs, which are, uh, special or specific use permits. Uh, for that, this is just to kind of show you all the things that you may find yourself considering or using in a sense, uh, when it comes down to being the commission and actually plotting the growth or development of certain projects. The best practices, um, really is used and accomplished whenever you have alignment between all of the boards and especially between your main boards and the city council. Your vision and character, as we've talked about a lot, the intent of the city and how it wants to be seen and developed is memorialized in those comp plans, in the B three code and those other regulations in which we abide by. Uh, obviously, the city council is elected to make those, uh, legislative decisions, but the bores themselves help so much with the implementation and are so necessary to the public process. If for nothing else, to really give citizens a forum in a place to where they can actually be heard and, um, you can then pass along and be constituent or be the representative for your constituents. One of the things that, um, I think sometimes is underutilized in other cities, but I know that we've done before, is, uh, the use of joint meetings. I think those are important because in real time, you kind of get to sit down with those other boards, with the city council even, and have real discussions about what are the concerns from a multitude of varying perspectives. And I think that's a necessary one to see what the outliers are and to, you know, come together and see from all angles how one project or one task should be attacked, but also to find the common ground and see what it is that we're all tied to, related to, and what we actually care about. Those successful cities have alignment. Yes, sir.
So who's responsible for organizing meetings for projects that we want to, I guess, delve deeper into?
Yeah, you yourself can ask for those and the staff will be in charge of, uh, coordinating those joint meetings. You know, typically, uh, they'll try to coordinate it to where it fits everybody's schedule and sometimes that could be a little bit, uh, difficult, but it would definitely be the staff that coordinates and, and gets those joint meetings set up.
Resin?
Yeah.
Um, do they have to or we have to get in contact with y'all or would it be best to wait until a P and Z meeting to add, ask to be, ask to have that added to the agenda?
Yeah, no, uh, both. Uh, I would use both avenues. You know, if there's something that comes up that's more recent in a P and Z meeting and you're understanding that this is something that has a possibility of repeating itself, you could ask for, you know, in the future, we would like to see a joint meeting on this topic or revisit this with a certain board, if there's a specific board. And also if you, you know, doing your homework on your own and studying, submitting those requests to staff, you know, that, that's not an issue as well. And have further documents just showing that, you know, we're gonna put it on the, on the agenda.
Oh, I was saying like, for example, with the Gateway Project, I feel like it'd have been beneficial to talk to city council because I feel like it would've been nice to get their opinion on things, seeing how our, uh, our, we're only doing recommendations and they're the ones that actually vote on things. So, um, is it, do you think it would be better to do like individual meetings or us all meeting together as groups?
Uh, in that regard, I would say, you know, joint meetings for the purpose of observing a singular project, I don't necessarily see that as, you know, very productive, but it can be helpful. Whenever I'm thinking of joint meetings, I'm thinking of more overarching topics such as, why is this having to go through, uh, I don't know, this process or understanding kind of the legs to what makes the whole deal work. I do agree with you that probably having a joint meeting on, uh, getting an understanding of what is the one intent or the future land use, um, expectations could have definitely helped guide that, uh, that project or at least that, that consideration. So it's not out of the realm, but I would say for specific projects, that may be a little bit harder. Whereas I would use a joint meeting to kind of gather and see a topic or a part in the code that may or may not be working and having discussions on what are ideals that best would, you know.
Thank you.
Yes.
That could be something like inviting the parks board to come in and talk to us about what they're thinking, you know, in terms of future where parks should be and what they should look like in the block.
Correct. Yes. And, um, trust your, trust your staff. Uh, you know, they are, they are there for the help and to make things easier. That's why they have to go through the process of creating all of these reports that you will see for each of the items and they really know their stuff. Um, you know, they are constantly digging into the code and finding ways or finding parts of it that actually really work, parts that are a little tough to go through and parts that just absolutely are, are, are difficult to work through. Um, just kind of touching on one of the more important, uh, procedures that we go through, which is the public hearing. It, um, allows staff, one, to make its presentation and to give its report on what is happening with a certain item or certain project. Um, it invites the applicant usually to come and discuss and answer questions from you all. And then it also achieves the civic engagement portion of getting the citizens involved and seeing the items and places that they actually care about. Um, I think that's a, a beautiful process and so necessary to local government and the functioning and success of cities. Um, having public hearings to make sure everybody is informed and aware of what's going on around them. As far as how public hearings are conducted, I really do appreciate this chair that we have because he does a great job in, uh, you know, keeping control of the public hearings, not just from a, uh, standpoint of citizens and their comments, but when it comes to the voting. Uh, one common procedure obviously is to have a motion on the floor then to begin discussion. But there's also, um, you know, real, um, benefit from having a discussion before anybody votes to say, you know, we actually approve this or we disapprove. A lot of times I find, once we have those actual discussions, sometimes we may have changed the, uh, perspective we came in with or we're convinced of something or we just get more information, whether that be from our commissioners or from applicants or from citizens. And whenever you're considering those motions, obviously we have the options to approve, to deny or to continue actions to a future meeting if there is a valid reason and for us not to act. Another kind of option in which you can exercise with some of these, uh, tools is having modifications, approving with conditions, sort to say. Um, you typically see that when it comes to PDDs, SUPs and development agreements. And that is a place where I think, you know, planning and zoning really shines because you have the ability to have a little bit more discretion than in some instances. Like for instance, with Platts, that is more of a legislative, uh, regulated field. Whereas if it meets the code, then technically you have to approve it. But in those instances, you can kind of imprint what is the best practice, what is something that we should consider. Maybe it's health, maybe it's safety, maybe it's fire and not having the adequate equipment to, you know, provide for a certain project. But, uh, those are the, the places where I would say P and Z has a lot of discretion in making those modifications.
So I know what a PDD is, but what is an SUP?
Yes, that is short term for a specific use permit or a special use permit. Um, those are typically, uh, allowed or uses that are not allowed by right but are codified or classified in certain zoning areas. And before they're allowed to come in, actually make or have that use in that zone, they have to present to you that application that says what it is. And then you all decide with the approval of council whether or not that's suitable for that area. And one thing about SUPs that I would like to touch on, I think in my practice and dealing with other clients, a lot of times people want to try to build a pattern or get into a pattern whenever it comes to these considerations as far as, you know, oh, we approved this SUP for this in this district, so now we're setting a precedent for approving this forever on. And that's not the case when it comes to SUPs. Really, it should be taken on a case by case basis. And it was built in that way to give that kind of, um, preliminary, I would say, approval or preliminary look at it before it's actually vested as a use in that zone or for that particular property.
Question.
Yes, sir.
As far as the public hearing proceeds, on citizens' comments, we're not allowed to get into a conversation with those people. It's just we're to sit here and listen and not respond to them. Is that correct?
That is typically the best way. That is best practices. That is best practices. I knew that was gonna come up and I was gonna touch on it a little bit later, but since we're here and you asked, um, there is no legal requirement as to how citizen comments should be ran. They just have to be had within the meeting and the public has to be given the opportunity. Now, in saying that, I think we protect you all by giving you the guidance that you don't necessarily ask or, you know, have to answer questions from the dais. One, because, you know, some people, when they come up here, they get a little contentious or they can start to kind of dig in or feel very passionate about what it is they're speaking on. And that's okay, but we should always maintain the decorum and respect for our citizens and hopefully listen with an open heart without taking offense to it. Now, are you allowed to ask questions? I would say yes, but I would keep it to a very minimum because one, then you kind of open the door for, you know, a back and forth kind of engagement, which is not really what is intended for. They are there to comment and to get their points and perspectives off and then we are to take that, internalize it, maybe get with staff to address one of the requests that was made or figure out a question that you may have, you know, to kind of facilitate that.
Well, there's citizen comments on, uh, you know, regular, but then when you get to each item, you can do it again, right?
Yes.
Is there a difference between the two as far as you're concerned with, or how do we respond or?
Well, with the citizen comments, that's supposed to be for items that are not on the agenda in a sense. They, gives them the opportunity to make you aware of things or to bring up certain, you know, future parts of discussions that they would like to see. Whereas the place and time for citizen comments under each item is specifically for that item. So that's kind of a way to control the dialogue in a sense, whereas if somebody comes up here for a specific item that gets off track talking about transportation or something, then we can return to, we're discussing what's agendized and what's been put. Yes. So, uh, I, I think it's a little bit later on in the presentation, we'll get to it, but I'll, I'll circle back to, from PDDs. Did you have a question?
I have a question. Is there a time when these interviews start to develop?
Open meeting?
We do set a time limit. Uh, typically it's three minutes. That's not something that's, you know, statutory or written down in code. But I think in order to, one, give everybody an opportunity to speak and then two, not to belabor or allow people to just come up and, you know, belabor or allow people to just come up and, you know, take over the meeting in a sense. It's really just used as a guideline for trying to control the conversation and keep it productive in a sense.
Well, that's what I was thinking about. If sometimes in general comments from the audience come as three minutes, but if you open up the floor and start in and getting into dialogue, it's gonna take a lot more than three minutes.
Definitely so. And that's kind of the purpose of, you know, either limiting your questions or waiting till they finish to address staff with the questions. And then maybe that's a more manageable dialogue and timeframe as opposed to kind of cutting into the, um, you know, allotted time for each citizen.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to make one comment real quick about the SUPs, just so y'all are aware. We don't currently do a lot of SUPs. We don't have a process for it in the B three code. So the only time we would do, um, like a conditional use permit or an SUP would be if it was prescribed for in the governing document. Like if the DA said conditional per- permit, conditional use permits are allowed, we would follow that process, but standard, um, with just a regular development that's following the B three code, we don't do conditional use or standard, uh, SUPs.
Yeah, I'm, I may have worded it wrong. Some people use conditional use permits. I think that may be the verbiage here, uh, same as.
Call them both.
Yeah, it's interchangeable, but go ahead.
Is there a possibility that we might be moving in that direction? With how we're planning on making some of the changes to how we build here in Bastrop?
It's a possibility. Um, it would all depend on what the code rewrites entail, if, if that's a process that we want to add into the code rewrite.
Thank you.
And this is just a map showing kind of the basic, uh, city limits in ETJ. There are some portions that we still gotta add and update. Recent, uh, annexations, development agreements, yeah, it's pretty large. But, uh, as it pertains to the city limits and ETJ, these are the areas in which we have authority and can regulate. Obviously, the ETJ, we have a lot less regulatory authority. And the legislator is constantly picking away at that with each session and trying to really, um, what I would consider attacking cities and what has historically been Texas and the government, the patchwork that we've all come to know. Whenever discussing the city limits, obviously, um, it is the incorporated municipal boundary and includes the survey. Uh, it's where we have our most powers, uh, the real teeth in our regulations and being able to prescribe for our citizens. What we deem is in the general welfare and, uh, what protects the public health and safety. In the ETJ, I want to touch on this because there's been a lot of changes recently, mostly in the local government code as it pertains to how ETJs work, how we acquire, uh, more ETJ and how citizens now can almost unilaterally exit from cities' ETJ, which then puts us in a weird position of not having the ability to regulate them like we previously did when they were a part of our ETJ. So traditionally, the ETJ size was determined by the number of people that you had. And, uh, depending on your population size, it would expand based on that. So it was like, you know, half a mile, mile, you know, whatever. More recently, the legislator has passed, um, one law that has really switched or flipped kind of the balance of how we approach our ETJs. Originally, before a property or landowner could be released from our ETJ, the city would have to give its consent, either by resolution or by ordinance. This law now gives property owners, uh, two opportunities to leave the ETJ. One, by a petition, by, um, more than fifty percent of the majority of owners and land for that ETJ area or property. And then two is by an election. They can have a petition and request an election to be let out of the city's ETJ. With the first process, there is almost no real authority for the city to, um, combat or to really even have some type of approval over them leaving the ETJ. And this kind of complicates things because in a lot of those areas, you find we have certain agreements, such as development agreements, or we're looking to try to bring them into city or expand utilities out there in preparation for future growth. And this kind of muddies the water by giving these property owners this ability to leave unilaterally without the city's, uh, approval or consent. How that works, they have to meet certain requirements of what the petition looks like. And the city has to review those to verify that it has met that petition. Essentially, that is really where the only teeth that the city has in denying those type of petitions because if it doesn't meet the letter of the law and is not a valid petition under the, uh, local government code, then it won't be, um, it won't be, you know, considered and they'll have to go back and try to redo that. But if it does meet the letter of the law of the petition, the city can either take action on that to approve and actually affirmatively release that. Or within a timeframe, which is the operation of the law, that, uh, property for that petition will be released automatically. That has really shaken up the, uh, the landscape of how cities have gone about planning and development, especially as it pertains to other properties that it's wanting to eventually add into its city limits.
So does, that, so basically if you're in the middle of it, you don't have to be on the edge. You can just be in the middle somewhere and you can basically make your petition to have your own island that's not regulated by. Is there ever a chance though that due to progression, due to development, city demand, that they can eventually go back and have those people put themselves within the city limits or part of the ETJ?
Yes, so there is a process for it annexing back into the ETJ. Um, that's how, that's really the only process that we have to enlarge the ETJ now. We have to go and get the voluntary consent of those property owners. And the, um, the kind of phenomenon you're describing, we term as the Swiss cheese, you know, of, effect. It, it, it can possibly cause those holes, those donuts, those islands in your ETJ, which kind of makes it weird whenever you're thinking about surrounding properties or adding those things back in. But what, to your, uh, to your question or to your point, they can however, come back into the city's ETJ after they leave. This would require them to request it and submit a petition, almost like they would for annexation. And one of the things that I just wanted to make sure I touched on is traditionally, whenever we would annex property into the city limits, our, uh, our ETJ would expand with that to match whatever our, you know, expansion limit is, whether it's half a mile or a mile. Now, we have to simultaneously with annexations, get the consent of those surrounding properties if we want to effectively expand our ETJ to that statutory limit. Yes, sir.
Question for you. Can you go back to the map?
Yep.
The little pink dotted lines all the way up seventy-one, isn't that driven around mostly by right of ways and also easements? Utility easements?
Uh, I'm not exactly sure. I, I, I don't have an answer for that, but, um.
So I've had a question from a few people about, about that, that they said they're not in the ETJ. But the right of way is. So is it the ri- that right of way is part of the ETJ or is?
The right of way is a part of the ETJ. Um, that, the, I think the dotted line you're referring to, that's the city limit. So it's the, the city, as long as, um, it's contiguous with the city, the right of way can be a part of the city.
But not the property?
Pardon?
But not the property, right?
It could be, yes.
Could be, okay.
It depends on like exactly where you're talking about, but along seventy-one, it's just highway seventy-one. That's a part of the city limits. And the purpose of that is if a property along seventy-one wants to be annexed, they are contiguous to the city, so we can annex them.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yes, ma'am.
So I have a question. Sylvia mentioned something about Tesla annexing in and something about our, you know, water sewer, our utilities being extended to them and then they unannex and all that. And now she's still gotta provide utilities. Can you explain that to me?
Uh, I don't know the exact specifics as far as what happened with that deal. But what I can say is that, you know, whenever a city or whenever a property comes into the city limits, uh, we typically extend or have to provide certain utilities. And, um, especially whenever you contract for it, it's a little harder to revert that back and to not also still have to provide those services just due to how important some of those utilities are, but.
It also depends if the utility is, is in our CCN, if it's in our territory for service. Even if they're not in the city limits, but they're in our territory, we do still have that duty to provide if able. If we can, if we have the ability to, 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 to provide.
The important part to kind of take away from this is just knowing the difference between what is the city limits and the ETJ and recognizing the limited authority that we have in our ETJ. You know, we try and some regulations extend to it, such as, you know, signs for just an example. But, um, you know, it is much more limited than what we're able to do within the actual city limits. And now we come to one of the bigger topics that's gonna be your best friend here in a couple of weeks and months, I'm sure, uh, which is the comprehensive plan. You know, um, this is often where your city character is housed and developed. It's all through this process. And, um, you know, in order to adopt a comprehensive plan, there is a process that you might, you must follow that is, uh, governed by a statute, which obviously requires a public hearing and then reviewed by this commission and approval by the council ultimately. The purpose of comprehensive plans is to achieve that common vision for the future, to, um, prepare and provide the direction for future growth and to really see what are the important aspects of the community that we want to drive forward, build up, maintain, and so on and so forth. It's really a, um, evolving document that, um, typically should be revisited every few years and, uh, grows with the city as it grows. One thing that I typically touch on is that the comprehensive plan itself is not the law, but a lot of times it establishes the legal foundation for the ordinances, the projects, the approvals that we must have. And there are even certain approvals that, um, you know, we would not recommend unless and until it is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. That's simply, that's simply smart planning. Uh, whenever you take the time that you all will take to put in thought into how, you know, streets, transportation is gonna work, your parks, master plans, all of that, you're gonna want those projects to align and to, you know, be established with those comprehensive plans in mind. Yes, sir.
Uh, you said a few years. What do you mean? Uh, how many years do you think would be good for revisiting these plans?
I believe, uh, typically it's like five to ten years. Every, uh, five to ten years when you start to look at it or you kind of project out that long as well. So, you know, for some of our citizens, they're on their twenty thirty-six comp plan that they just adopted.
And we have plans to revisit ours pretty soon, correct?
Yes, that is, that is coming up.
The landscape, I mean, even five years ago, between now and then is completely different. And Boston and just those surrounding areas has drastically changed even two or three years ago.
The amount of growth that just this central Texas region has experienced over those five years is really astronomical and, and numbers don't do it justice sometimes. Um, you know, one of the, I'm, go back, but one of the things, there is an exception for one of those, um, ETJ release bills and essentially says, you know, there's an accepted area where growth has, I think, doubled in the last, you know, couple of years and accepts them from having to deal with some of those releases. But yes, your comp plan, um, you know, what is the vision? What is the natural steps to get to the vision? Um, a lot of the, um, I think studies and master plans that Sylvia has brought up in the past will be addressed in those comp plans and will become a part of those comp plans. And it's a good thing that you're going through it now because one of the kind of tricky thing with comprehensive plans is you spend all this time kind of going through it for, in a vacuum almost or for a picture timeframe, but by the time you really finish and get to implementing it, it's time to start looking at it again or the layout changes to where it's a little bit different. So as I said, it's, it's an ever-evolving, uh, kind of structure or tool that needs to be visited.
Can I ask you a little bit about the timing of the comp plan development? So we spend however much time, we need to talk to, talk to the other commissions, we meet together, we come up with a vision. That then goes to the city council for approval.
Yes.
Or does it go before public comment at any period of time?
Yeah, so there'll be public hearings at, um, probably all levels, uh, when it comes to discussion of the comp plan. That's one to make sure we're understanding and getting the pulse of the citizens and have clear direction for, you know, what we want and what we want to see. Um, but yes, there will be.
So how is that information sent out to the citizens?
I can, I can touch that. Um, so we will be, um, engaging with HAFN associates. They are the people, um, who did the comp plan back in twenty sixteen. They'll be doing our revision. Um, the contract with them is actually going to city council, I believe, June eleventh. Um, is when the contract for them to revise the comp plan is. What they do is they engage the citizens, they send out studies, they do their studies and that's how the comp plan is informed by the citizens.
All right, and so do we start the process before then or will it be after?
After.
After all the citizens?
Um, it's kind of, it's an ongoing process. It, they, they kind of happen at the same time so that we can get the public engagement as well as the public comment.
All right, so we gather all the public comments, we do our work, and then it goes before the city council for approval. Is that how, is that the, when the clock starts?
Uh, yes, but as far as referring to the clock starts, what, what?
Well, I mean, I'm assuming it has to be made official somehow.
Yes.
Before the current one expires, which is, um, till twenty thirty-six.
Oh, so we have some time between now and twenty thirty-six to get this thing done.
Which is why we're starting it now, trying to get it done.
That's good. I will be dead by then.
No, ma'am, you will not.
So, so if, if I can recall right, with the last one that they did, Pete?
Pardon, I'm sorry.
With the last one that they did, they went out, they had different rodeos. They're gonna base like of the previous rodeos that we had, they'll have events around town, get the citizens' opinions and, and really delve into what's gonna be good, right?
Correct.
Uh, they'll have, again, they'll have opportunities to come to the council meetings or PNZ meetings, whatever, right? And, and give, implement their input on it. And, and we take those things into consideration along with the firm. Um, and it, it goes as far as parks, um, recreation, right? Like just a whole bunch of everything and then just with, like you said, with the growth. And it's just gives us a guideline and a base on how we, you know, want everything. And it, it, and again, there are some things in the previous one, but yeah, twenty thirty-six, that's twelve years away, right? That's, and we're probably in twenty twenty-eight right now, right? So we need to get on it, but not rushing, but taking into great consideration.
What's the, what's the timeline looking like for a revision? A year, less than a year?
Uh, you have any?
That I have no clue. It kind of depends on how long, um, the public comment takes, how long the process takes and how much discussion there is to be had. Um, cause what HAFN associates will do is it, it's actually prescribed in the current comp plan. Like they, they, the studies they send, they send out, the public engagement that they grab. Um, they also, one of the things that they do is they request input for them, for, from the citizens on the topics of interest. Basically, they, we find out what our priorities are from the citizens and then cost is derived from that and that's kind of what drives it. But it could be, could be any timeframe. It really just depends on how long it takes.
The least that I've seen is a couple of months, maybe four, four, six, four to six months. Uh, most I've seen is maybe a year. If it's really complex, if there's a lot of, uh, moving parts. I mean, your comp plan that touches on community growth, public facilities, housing, neighborhoods. land use and community image, transportation, parks, recreation, cultural arts and tourism, implementation and everything in between there. I couldn't think of a more appropriate name for it, it's, it's comprehensive.
The previous plan took a year, it was started in, pardon me, 2016 and adopted in 2017.
Yeah, I don't think this one here would, will take as long though, just with everything. All right, Alja, we're gonna cross our fingers, but just with everything we've been going through and discussing here as of late, I think we have a great foresight on being able to put.
Yes.
Relatively soon.
And that's true, that's, uh, that is so true because you see kind of what some of the issues are amongst the citizenry and just the, uh, overall growth and development path that Bashrop wants to take. So having those issues at the forefront of your mind and, you know, fresh, I think will make for a good discussion and for, you know, really having the, the hard conversations about what it is that we want to do and how we want to move forward. Um, here, obviously, I touched on the topics that are specifically in your comp plan, but this is just a short list of what most general comprehensive plans are. And they are conceptual while zoning, it definitely has more specific regulations that we have to follow. So thinking about the elements of the code and how that, um, coincides with your comp plan, sometimes, you know, whenever we see a lot of issues or things that are being asked for variances, it's almost easier to address it in the code or to amend and change the code in certain ways to make it more functional for how the city is actually interacting, what its intent is for its growth and addressing a lot of these issues that you find. Our code, both the code of ordinances and the B3 code captures mostly all of this in it and, uh, addresses it in some form or fashion. And that's the beauty of having a code is, you know, being able to determine what the city cares about and using that as the basis for enforcing and getting properties to comply with these codes. Knowing the code helps a lot. I know that's probably cliche and it can be a beast. Uh, there are a lot of moving parts to it, obviously, but, you know, focusing on each section as it comes to you and then just kind of having a little bit of foresight of how it may connect to other parts is always gonna make it, uh, easier and better to maneuver and navigate through. And that's where you also, you know, lean on us, uh, lean on staff to have those conversations and to continuously update and shape the code. Um, you know, like I said, this is where the real teeth is and this is where the real teeth are. And that's how we go about enforcing our regulations by implementing these codes.
Question.
Yes, sir.
So, um, this might pop up later, but on the specific area of the codes, right? I know we're having this workshop and you're breaking things down to us. Do we plan on having, or can we have future workshops where we just specifically delve into those certain things? Like codes, cause I mean.
Yes.
Uh, you know, everyone up here is, is new. I was here when, you know, we was kicked off the B3 and that thing was, you know, and like it just would be nice to really have a better breakdown of the codes and how they work just cause sometimes, you know, we can be surprised by what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do based off of whatever is within that code, right?
Correct, yeah, and that's coming. Uh, that is definitely something that's been talked about and it has been in the works of planning with, uh, staff and, and management. And I think that's important. Um, you know, one of the things, and I don't know how often we do it as a staff, but I think it's good to review and try to bring updates to the code, uh, semi-annually at least, you know, every six months for sure, every year. I think our code requires us to do every year or two maybe. But just being able to make sure that it's growing and evolving with, you know, the character and intent of the city, that's important. So those are overdue probably and, uh, we'll be looking to try to address some of those hot topic areas that I know we asked about and also just understanding the code better so that we know how to, how to operate up here.
You know, I've been asking for a while for, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
For, um, Sylvia to bring us a list of items where we've got problems. You know, if everybody's got the same problem, we obviously have a problem. So that we could start delving into maybe how to trying to solve some of those problems.
Mm-hmm.
Would it be appropriate to do that if we're gonna break the code down for training purposes into sections? Um, does it make sense to try to talk about those issues within each section? Or does somebody bring us a list and we look at those? I mean, I just think before we start looking at making changes, we really need to understand where we currently have problems. And I'm not clear on that.
Yeah.
Um, so, and I, a training on the B3 code would be real helpful for me, so.
I would, I mean, this is just me speaking on recommendation. I would start with the hot topic areas or the parts of the code that are receiving probably the most scrutiny or that, uh, we see have the most, uh, they come up the most either here or in council. And then, uh, kind of working through the rest of them to make sure they align with those changes that we may or may not make to that code.
Uh, I was gonna ask, uh, you were, you were here for, specifically for when they adopted the B3 code, correct?
Uh.
Well, yeah. Were, were either of you here?
I was not.
She was, I, I was when, um, I had just got kicked off.
Okay, I was just gonna ask, uh, how did you spend your time preparing for that code rewrite? Were you reviewing old codes or were you starting?
So I was not a part of the rewrite. I was only a, like, when it was being implemented is around the time I, I became a commissioner.
Okay.
And so, um, just, I know for me, not being a part of the rewrite and then getting in, trying to learn, uh, because they did make some changes or some, put some things in there to, in what they thought would help out, but it was at times complex.
Yeah.
And, um, just from my experience in learning or trying to learn things back then, I think this is very vital in helping all of us be able to learn and have some answers to our questions. I know Pete's been having some for a while and I think this would really help.
Yeah, and I, I think that, that'll be, uh, one of the next things that we do, even if, um, you know, I have to schedule a workshop to kind of come back and talk through some of the legal aspects of it. I think that'll help everybody at this point.
Yeah, I guess the basis of my question was are we expecting a complete rewrite of the code? Or should we be expecting revisions in the areas that we're having problems with?
No, I, I, I won't say, there'll definitely be revisions, but I don't think it'll be a complete rewrite. I don't think.
Yeah, so it'll just be like a B, a B3 updated with the, the specific areas that people are having problems with.
Yeah, one, one other thing that would be helpful for me is to understand why the decisions were made after the, you know, everybody went through this elaborate process and a lot of negotiations to get that code developed. I'd like to understand why the decisions were made based on all of that. So that I have some background in understanding before I can say, okay, well, that, that, they came up with this idea for this reason and it's not working based on what we're hearing. So maybe we need to modify it somehow, taking into account what everybody wanted before.
Yeah.
Versus where we now have problems. So that we don't just make some kind of radical change that makes no sense.
Uh, last I heard, it was, uh, recommendations based on the firm that was, uh, introducing or s- I've heard selling the code rewrite to our city, um, per se.
Let me say this to kind of address those comments. I think the process that you're getting ready to embark on with the comprehensive plan will lead to some of those revisions because I can't say that the B3 code was created at the same time or with the same intents as what the previous comp plan was. I don't know when that last was done.
The B3 code was done in 2019, but the comp plan was done in 2016, so the issue is they don't match. The, the B3 code doesn't exactly match the comp plan, vice versa. So we, going through the rewrites of the comp plan will help inform the changes we make in the B3 code to make sure that they align.
Exactly.
Like, like Sylvia was saying with the, um, tree preservation, like if we want to be a tree city, increase the preservation of trees, lower the caliber where we started a heritage tree and things like that.
Yes, sir, dear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, just gotta comment more than anything else with regards to the way we're proceeding with the, this stuff is that, you know, what's really important, uh, these are the experts, the staff is, we're not. And what's really been helpful for me is that when you, staff recommends to us, they've already done the research, they did, I don't have to go do that research, you know? And everything they're giving us is to code.
Yes.
Nothing else. I, I, I want a board of adjustments when, which is completely opposite of this. I don't care what you say, you know, top thing.
Yeah.
It's, we're gonna make a decision based on what's given to us. But in this situation, they are supplying this, but it'd be real helpful for them to give us their recommendation and then we can ferret out the, the problems from, from that.
Correct.
That's the key, I think, more than anything else, not so worried about what happened in the back.
Mm-hmm.
Back end, it's what we're moving forward.
Right.
They're supplying that information to us, so.
And that's a great point, yeah, that, they are the legs and, you know, they are the ones that are comparing the issues and entrenched in the code every day, so yes.
Right, yeah, I, I think that's a great point, right? No, it is, right? We can, a- and again, to kind of, maybe to help you out is, I think we've dealt with a lot here as of late. Uh, or I wouldn't, maybe dealt is not a good word, but we've had a lot come before us, right? And to, to help us really understand how we need to do things moving forward. We've had a lot of citizen, citizen involvement. Um, and, and of course, if with y'all, if y'all have any questions about maybe some past things with the code, you can definitely get with me. I know there were some times that due to the way the code was set up, it made things super difficult for something that could have been really easy. But it was, even with stack, staff recommendation, right? We still were adhering to the code, right? And, right, we have to, but, you know, at times it, it, it tied our hands, right?
The point is, is we don't, we're not allowed gray in this situation.
Right, right.
And I think that's what's happened in, kind of in the past, in everybody's mind. They need to understand that what is put before us has got to be the code.
Yeah.
We don't have.
Right, and there's no way around it.
Join me on the, the board of adjustments if you want to make those other decisions that way.
And to, to, to kind of wrap it up and continue on with the presentation, you know, I, I think no code is perfect and there are gonna be growing pains. Yeah, I know, surprise, right? Us legal people don't mess up. I would like to think that, but that's not true. Um, i- there's growing pains, there're gonna be constant revisions that are gonna need to be made. So you'll start to see that in the process. And speaking of the process, kind of a segue into this slide, uh, this is kind of a most basic breakdown of the development process, if you could break it down into four topics or subcategories. Um, obviously dealing with zoning, um, the subdivision of land and how things are actually plotted, um, situated, property being used and site development, which comes with all the analysis and evaluating, you know, how this will actually go up, what it looks like, you know, the, uh, construction regulations, so on and so forth. And then actually issuing those building permits, making sure everything is certified, make sure people are, um, have all the necessary items that they need to actually put shovels in the ground and begin building. So to kind of go through those, um, rather quickly, this is the zoning map that I was able to most recently pull. I don't know if it needs to be updated, but it was pulled recently. Just shows the different place types that Bashrop has.
It's good, Colin, do you mind? Can you zoom in on that map just a little bit? Please?
It's a lot of shades of purple.
I know it, but it, like, it's a lot of words on there, so.
Yeah, we might.
Thank you, sir.
The words are just reflective of the place type, so it'll be like rural, core, nothing.
Yes, so let me assist a little bit, cause I think I've got at least the place types up so I can.
The dark, dark purple is the, the P5 core and then it go, the lighter it gets, the less intense it gets in zoning.
See the, the staff, rely on the staff, man. But no, really, um, this kind of shows the, the districts or the place types as it's, as it's, uh, called here that illustrate the different types of uses, uh, the intensities that are allowed within those types and, uh, where they're kind of situated. Um, it's not just by happenstance. Um, each place type is, you know, developed or, or put in there based on the character of where it's at, the, uh, you know, topography even and other things that make it suitable for the type of uses that are prescribed with each of these place types.
I, I have one question. Is this map, or is this map have all the flood stuff in it? I mean, has some of that stuff been changed since this map was made?
I believe so, but I, this, this is only showing the zoning and that's, that's a whole.
Thinking about comp plan, we're gonna have all that information on a map, so we, okay.
You will have all.
It's an overlay that can be added, yeah.
You have more maps than you want to look at.
It can be added on there. Um, it's just, if you add too much to the map, it gets, I mean, the purple is hard enough to read.
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
If you really wanna, on your own time, take a look at it, if you go to the Central Presidential District, the CAD interactive map, you can do those overlays and play around with them.
Yeah. So with the zoning, what kind of uses are we intending? What districts do we have? And no, this is not anywhere in Bashrop, this is just a random picture of zoning. Uh, but, you know, what is allowed and where are we placing these, uh, these allowable uses? You know, what are the intensities? Um, the types, they need to be located, some types need to be located in specific parts of the city. And, um, you know, one of the things that I mentioned earlier, SUPs, special use permits or otherwise conditional use permits, those are a part of zoning because traditionally, uh, you know, you'll prescribe that a use may be permitted if it is suitable based on the application and what is actually going there. As Kennedy said, uh, you don't see a lot of those come through here, but it is pretty common in a lot of the, uh, cities or jurisdictions we represent. So I just wanted to mention that here. And then thinking about the scope of zoning, actually, um, as you know, it is, or may not know, it's governed by the local government code, chapter 211. And really zoning is very specific, like I said earlier, um, more specific than what you would have with regulations for the comp plan, but, uh, works together with it in order to provide the best use and best development. As you see down there, probably the most important thing to take from this is to, uh, your zoning must or should be in accordance with your comp plan. That's the whole reason why we do it and why it's important. Um, zoning ordinances often shape the guidelines for the development and, like I said, the allowable uses. So whenever we're talking about the comp plan in the coming days, you know, obviously we'll be thinking about what are some of the current and existing zoning place types? Um, you know, what may or may not change within those zoning place types? And what makes sense as far as what may be coming for the future and possibly future land use? I know we talked about wanting to kind of look and observe at the future land use map and that'll definitely be a part of this process. Whenever, obviously looking at it, you wanna make sure you're having legitimate goals, uh, providing for the order and natural growth, uh, consistent with, you know, kind of where the city is heading and still trying to, uh, promote the culture and protect, you know, your citizens. I won't necessarily say property values, so to say, but there is, you know, certain types that make sense next to others. And, you know, whenever you're thinking about residential, you don't want to just slap something up big that could be a nuisance or that could detract from what people's natural property rights are. And I think that's one thing that really becomes a part of zoning is to really understand and observe that people have property rights and they are, we're, we're, we're a nation built on having the right to do what you want employees to maximize your property. having the right to do what you want and please to maximize your property in life. So, think about that, compatibility is key. Um, you know, some issues that we'll kinda touch on a little bit later down the line, uh, issue of spot zoning, uh, kinda deals with the compatibility issue. I actually think we had a recent ordinance revision that kind of made it easier for, um, some uses or non-conforming uses even to still remain compatible with their neighboring, uh, properties and, you know, that's gonna be important whenever you're just considering all the different types of amendments or zoning, uh, requests that may come for the board. Having the appropriate location for uses, that's what zoning is all about, right? Um, you know, just making sure that we're observing the, uh, not only the uses in it, but, you know, the character districts. We have in the B three code, specific character districts that kinda tell what is the, uh, topography of of those lands in those areas and what's appropriate. And as I alluded to, there are quite a few challenges to zoning. Um, you know, as the legislative act before the council, usually the changes that are approved are presumed valid. However, it must follow the statutory process, the process for notice for changing. The process for property owners that are around the the uses that are changing or even may be affected by the change, whether that's, uh, you know, affecting how the use has previously been or you know, taking away a use that may have already been there. Like I said, spot zoning, um, you typically see this become a problem when you're rezoning for particular owners and not thinking of the highest and best use of the land. Um, always, the user should not matter and as it pertains to zoning. Um, you know, always we're thinking of what is the best and highest use of the land and you don't wanna do or make a decision based on what the user is promising or giving to you, understanding that that decision is going to go with that land for the foreseeable future or until another change. The spot zoning specifically deals with single tracks that are necessarily rezoned that do not meet the surrounding area or are not compatible with the surrounding area. So you're kind of putting in like a little really spot around everything else that, you know, may be residential, and it just doesn't make sense. That's an illegal act, legal practice, where the tract of land in a is adopted in a manner that's incompatible with surrounding area, in a manner that is incompatible with the city's zoning ordinance, and again, the comprehensive plan, it's the magic word, comp plan. Also be aware of contract zoning, um, you know, this, it's kinda tough to, um, delineate with some of the other tools that we do use, but understand that the tools we use are only given to us by legal authority, and we're not trying to avoid or commit practices of contract zoning. Contract zoning specifically is, you know, a legal agreement between the city and a property owner to adopt a certain zoning classification in exchange for certain promises by the property owner. As I said, we're looking to what the best use is, not who the best user is per se. Whenever we kinda think about planned development districts, uh, that's an area where we've gotta be cautious. One, because there is an element of agreement, but it is recognized as legal way to further plan the development and to allow the flexibility and creativity that certain projects absolutely need to be successful, and for certain areas to be successful, you know, the use of the land or the what's around the land, more times than not, almost all the time dictates what you can actually do there. So, you know, some instances, it may be absolutely necessary to have that flexibility through whether that's a development agreement or a planned development district.
I I have a question about PDDs in general. Would it be better for us as the commission? I mean, would it be better for us as a city in terms of, you know, not hogtie in the city's staff's hands with PDDs? To have some kind of guidelines that we could operate within, so that, you know, if they wanna come to us with commercial projects that have PDDs, that's kind of generally accepted, uh, but not necessarily in whatever, you know, but to have some kind of guidance where we all are comfortable going into the deal that it's not every single thing that comes to us that has a PDD.
Yes, that is, and that's a great point. I think that's, uh, very necessary and relevant. One, because what you'll find and, you know, they'll fully take advantage of, uh, developers will use PDDs to try to just, you know, get all the variances that they may want, or to, you know, push through a lot of things that are incompatible with the codes and regulations that we have on the books. So that's kinda where the caution comes, because you don't wanna just fall into the act of putting everything through a PDD. But generally, some of the guidelines obviously are, it must be something that's unique, must show, you know, above and beyond a quality that, um, you know, a certain use would already have there. You know, it doesn't allow for the same cookie cutter type of development or, you know, subdivision that you would see in any other place or land. Um, the intent of having PDDs is to get that maximum use of the land based on what the land is, as well as to achieve some of those incentives and unique qualities that may be a little bit outside the realm of the code, but isn't necessarily the intent of the code. It just may not work in the way that the land allows.
And we'll be able to, I'm I'm asking, right, we'll we'll be able to give ourselves some sort of protection against that flexibility in our comprehensive plan, correct?
Yeah, I I think so.
I I think that's the biggest concern of all of us is that it gives so much flexibility, but how can we protect ourselves within that?
For sure, and, uh, you know, I think you guys have seen, most of you have seen or been a part of, or at least heard of projects that have gone through the PDD process, and they've all been different. Um, some have passed, some have not have not passed, just because of the suitability of it or what was actually being presented. So you don't ever have to feel handcuffed to approving a PDD, because it is a function of zoning, and zoning is somewhat discretionary in the sense of you can consider what is appropriate for this use for this land.
Question, when I question statement, but a PDD is a, uh, very viable tool for the city.
For sure.
To to operate under, and it actually, if if, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody else, that allows the staff to do all this and then bring it to us in one big bundle, opposed to getting each individual. So we don't have thirty seven warrants on one item, you know, that's what they deal with through the PDD. Is that correct?
You've been here for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it it saves a lot of work for them, right?
Yeah, most definitely, um.
I mean, it's a, it's a very good tool.
It it allows them to work through the code, like, that's, I think that's a consistent statement that has been introduced with the the introduction of PDDs, uh, period. Uh, it allows us to observe what is the intent of the code and understand staff doesn't just willingly give into the request of each property owner that comes in and applies to the PDD. We don't just give the maximum, you know, request that they get. We try to keep it in the realms of what the code is and stick to as close as the code as we possibly can. There are some aspects that need a little bit of massage and or may, you know, require a little bit more give or take on one side, and you know, it's it's all a comprehensive process, because where we might have to give on one side due to what this land allows, we may be a little bit tougher on something that they must give to us in order for it to make sense and to get that high quality product or project that we're looking for. So, I think one of the important things to take from it is that not every project is suitable for a PDD, but the ones that are, are being scrutinized enough by staff and compared to the code to where, when it comes to you, the ask is typically in the realm of what is the best practice or highest use for that.
Well, with a lot of projects, you just about have to do it under PDD in order to be able to move forward. I think it's what's happened with Gateway, to be honest with you, is the fact that it didn't, they didn't get the PDD, you know, so then they didn't go any further. So I know there's gonna be a lot of changes with that, but that's, it's, I think they're very important.
Uh, we just have to be very diligent with going through the PDDs and and trying to analyze what they're asking for and creating some sort of understanding of their intention behind it, for example, moving around parking in a lot of these different properties makes sense most of the time and might warrant a PDD versus asking for a change in building height, which is more investment oriented versus layout or feasibility.
It's part of, part of our process that we need to stay with.
Yeah.
And one thing I did notice, like, with the Gateway, um, when it was first presented to us, and I wanna take fault for it myself and the board, we didn't spend a lot of time like going through the different asks that were addressed later on when it got to council or whatever, so I think with the PDDs, it's important that we go through each variance and say, okay, this or the, yeah, variance that they're asking the PD saying, hey, this is asking for this because, well, it doesn't make sense to have parking on the highway.
Yeah.
Okay, this guy's asking for a taller building, well, cause he wants more rooms, is that necessarily what we want? Type of stuff like that.
Yeah, and to that point, you know, that's a good, good point, uh, hold us accountable too and to making sure we address those issues, uh, you know, dot those I's, cross those T's and give you all the best information for making that decision on the PDDs.
Well, maybe if we fix some of the things that are not working in the code, a lot of this conversation goes out the window.
Exactly, you know, the more, uh, we can make the code have easier compliance, the less of these that you will see, and that's kind of the the purpose of not only a PDD, but sometimes when you see variances, i- it shows you what are the, you know, blaring issues or the consistent issues amongst projects that we can then address in the code, which makes it a little bit easier. You influenced it, I'll tell you that much. Well, moving on to the rezoning portion of it, um, effectuated and allow the same process as regular zoning, so there's really no difference between the original zoning and rezoning process. Um, there's obviously a rational basis test, which you must give consideration to. Uh, but like I said, in most zoning matters, you do have discretion as far as what is appropriate. And as you can see, these are the legal standards. These are all the things that the staff goes through and tries to address in the reports. Now granted, um, you know, you may start to see a little bit more depth to those reports, just to make sure that we are covering these things and that you know what are the issues as it pertains to each project, cause it will be on a kinda case by case basis. But, um, trust and understand that whenever things are coming with a staff recommendation, they have vetted it and gone through the issues and at least observed and analyzed how it may ultimately affect the project as a whole. The rezoning process, as I said, starts with, you know, the property owners applying to rezone, and then staff is reviewing that request, making sure that it, uh, meets the meets all of the, uh, proper regulations, is it compatible? Um, then begins the process of actually getting the notice out, which is all statutory in nature. Even though we're only required to do two hundred feet, we think it more prudent to give property owners notice within six hundred feet.
That's just for PDDs. So PDD, our ordinance requires five hundred feet, we do six hundred feet as a buffer. With regular zoning, it's two hundred feet and we do a hundred foot as a buffer.
So you're getting that extra buffer just to make sure we're meeting the letter of the law. You know, um, I think in the past, there've been some instances where properties have been so close that we've gone ahead and sent the, uh, notification to them as well, just to make sure that we're not shorting anybody an opportunity to speak on what's going on in their their city. Another part of the development process is subdivisions, and won't talk about this too much, too long, because, uh, you know, uh, it's pretty much statutory in nature, and once it is complete, uh, plat, um, it meets the code, it does require the approval of the bores in the council that it's coming before. Whenever it comes to plats, as opposed to some of your zoning requests, there is less discretion, and I'll even say very little discretion. The only reason I'm not saying there is no discretion is because if it doesn't meet those codes, those regulations, there's issues with safety, the health, welfare, then those are reasons that we can deny, or we can approve with certain conditions or modifications. But I caution again on that, because it has to be a bona fide reason to deny. It can't just be, oh, we don't like this project, we don't like the owner, we don't like the, how they dealt with us. Whenever it comes to plats, if it meets the code, meets those plans and things that we've put in, put in place, then there is gonna need to be approval for that. And the timing of it all, you know, there's a lot more regulations dealing with the timeframe of when these must be reviewed and actually approved, that thirty day shot clock that I know some of you may be aware of, uh, it really starts to run. And we gotta do our part as a staff to make sure we're getting these, um, these plats and things in front of you all and the correct boards to meet that legal timeline.
So I guess my, I have a question, um, so once we get to the plating part, if there's still any concerns from the public and the plat complies to the code, then where do we find that? Is there any room for changing or what is the recommendation? Should we even acknowledge the public at that point, or where are we at with that?
Well, like I said, if it meets the code, then you're you're pretty much obligated to have that duty to approve. But wherever wherever there are legitimate concerns, I think it's reasonable to ask the developer or the applicant to, you know, do they have anything that is addressing that, are they intending to cover that issue or, you know, more so implying to them that obviously this is gonna be something that may come up either now or in the future, and trying to find ways to address it. But, um, naturally, once it is meeting the letter of the law in our code, then it's kinda out of our hands to deny it for the reasons the public might see it as unsuitable. So, um, with that, it's just, I think, understand that for plats, it's a a very rigid process and, um, very little discretion outside of what the requirements of the code are. A little more on plats, um, obviously we can enact rules for what the regulations for plats and subdivisions are. Um, they have to be about development, never looking at, you know, literally the word subdivide. Doesn't necessarily mean that you have to take a line in the property and cut it in to half. Uh, there's been case law that is suggested and been ruled on that says, you know, even the fencing of one part could necessarily be looked at as a subdivision of land, and that's important because, especially when you're dealing with the ETJ and how we interact with the county already, there's an agreement as to how we're gonna regulate development in the ETJ. And, uh, you know, some properties may not have platted or may never plat, which necessarily wouldn't bring it in the realm of coming in front of you, but there could be certain issues or certain acts that they could do that would technically make it a, uh, subdivide. Another example from the West Laco case is, uh, rental of spaces for mobile home parks. That was kinda interesting. Um, and plats usually they're addressing or showing where the streets, utilities, buildings and improvements are within the, uh, project. And it's possible you can have your tree regulations applied to ETJ if it is done through the plating ordinance. So that's kind of a little bit, probably more than what we're willing to get into depth right now, but I know trees have been a hot topic at one point in time. So that's kind of a little bit, probably more than what we're willing to get into depth right now, but I know trees have been a hot topic at one point in time.
On the, on the topic of the trees, right? Is there something that we can implement code wise, right, to where, like, not saying it's not gonna be a concern, but where it's a stiff penalty for, for, can we make that as a, a code violation? I don't know if it, I know they've been taxed, right? But like, we need something stiffer for those coming in that wanna mess with the trees.
Yeah, I think there are definitely places where you can up the enforcement or the penalties that are, um, that are coinciding with the whatever's going on, whatever they have violated. You just gotta be careful to not be so penalized in that it's one looked at as a taking or, you know, doesn't allow the, uh, developer the use of his land properly. I think that will be a separate specific issue that we ourselves would have to do a legal deep dive on to just kind of understand what are the realms in which we can go to protect those trees? What are the fees that we can assess that would discourage more developers from cutting down trees where it's not necessary? And I think there are a lot of great examples in the, uh, central Texas area as far as having tree regulations and having certain, um, enforcement tools with those tree regulations that make people want to comply or at least try to build with or around the natural environment. So hopefully, yes, we'll put a pin in that. We'll.
Yeah. Can't be a bird city without trees.
You're right about that. That is for sure.
I had a quick question.
Yes, sir.
What are some of the penalties you can put on developers when they don't comply or they kind of conveniently make a mistake?
Yeah, typically it's, uh, gonna be fines, uh, assessed that have to, um, you know, they are related to the size, age of the tree, you know, typically the bigger, obviously the heavier the penalty or the more value that that tree technically had or was giving. So typically it's, it's, it's gonna be in the nature of fines. So. Yeah, I, I don't have it kind of off the top of my head. That's something I would need to kind of review and, kind of review and bring back to you, but that is something that we can look at in the near future, just to make sure that we're, you all are aware and that we have a good grasp of it whenever we're considering these projects. So they know Bashop is the city that cares about its trees. So if you're coming with the intent that you're just gonna clear cut, then you might as well. I don't know. Go to Kyle. I don't know. Sorry, Kyle residents, if you're watching. I have to say some city.
We love you, Kyle.
So, um, more about the subdivision regulations. Obviously plats related to the city intends to grow and the standards for construction and development. So really just making sure that, um, we're following that, that letter of the law. And that's what the staff is for. Like I said, they are the ones that are doing kind of the heavy lifting. It's making sure that all of these, um, subdivisions, all these plats are meeting those necessary requirements. Just quickly touching on the shot clock, as I said, that's the literal statutory timeline in which we must review and give response to the applicant for how that plan or plat is going to be decided on. And if there is a denial, like I said, it must be citing to an ordinance, city code, a state law, some justifiable reason as to why it's not proper and due to be passed. The next kind of bucket in the process is the actual site development, which consists of all these topics that you can see here. And really it, um, you know, really puts into reality how everything is gonna come together to make it a functional project. What are the utilities? How are we expanding out there? Do we have the capacity? Is it within our service area? What easements do we need? Access, right of way, um, shared use path? You know, all of those things are kind of coming alive based on the regulations that we've been approving in the previous two uh, aspects of the site development. Um, again, a, a process that staff is very intense on and, uh, uses their brain power to get through so that by the time it comes to the boards and council that need to approve it, it's been checked off and vetted. And that also kind of goes for the building codes. Um, you know, you may see in certain type of requests, um, how developer chooses to go about interacting or implementing the building codes. But just know that it is a part of this, um, kind of subdivision and, um, building process. Then talking a little bit about, um, HB 2439, this was a bill that was recently passed that kind of gave developers a little bit more leniency in how and what they were using to build these certain projects. Essentially what it is saying that if the material used to build is allowed in these international codes that you just saw, the building codes that we all have, then the city can't prohibit or can't require them to do above and beyond what those basic materials are. Unless there are certain exceptions such as if you have a like historic district, for instance, you can kind of regulate more what the character looks like, the type of materials that are going in to add to that character. But essentially, for the most part, you have to be very careful of how you go about, uh, regulating building materials in the products and whether or not it relates to the character, the residential or commercial nature of it and just the overall architecture. There are a lot of talk about the aesthetic method and what is used, but really you should be basing your, um, your standards on those codes that we talked about, those building codes. And all the ti- I mean, mostly we adopt those straight out. Sometimes we have exceptions to those codes or we'll go in and make, uh, little amendments to the codes that fit the city of Bashrop. But, um, it's, it's frowned upon and it'll be even to have something more stringent than that. Then think about the look and feel. Uh, what are we trying to preserve? What are we trying to actually accomplish and achieve? You know, you see here just four different types of properties that may all have the same type of use, but obviously have a different look and feel based on the type of materials. And it could be that some of these are, you know, in those specialized districts or historical aspects that allow you to have a little bit more regulation on them. Now getting into a topic that I know we've requested, I think, once or twice. And this will be revisited in more depth at the future because I think it, one, um, desecitates that because it is a beast of a, of a regulation. And that's signs, how we go about it. The legitimate concerns in which we've been given some authority to regulate obviously have to do with the safety and how it actually affects, you know, drivers, pedestrians, uh, businesses, you know, how it's constructed and what is actually there and regulating the aesthetics for those. Obviously having a sign as big as this capital chrome next to your residence probably doesn't do any good for your property value, but those are things we all have to be cognizant and just aware of what is actually legitimate whenever we're looking at those sign regulations. Whenever considering the key regulations, there's very few specifications, well, not very few. There are quite a few specifications that we actually can get into. Um, those typically being the types of signs. I know currently we don't allow for digital signs and there are a lot of cities that still don't allow for digital signs. You know, the height, what's going on with the movement of the content of the sign, certain numbers, landscaping, whether or not it has some type of non-conforming use or has been grandfathered in by an older code or something else that may have granted it that ability to be there. But, um, there are definitely administrative procedures involved whenever it comes to these key sign regulations. And, um, you know, recently there've been challenges to certain, uh, sign enforcement regulations, but one thing we can say, we did get a win not too long ago with the city of Austin case that was long pending before the Supreme Court. Essentially what it allows for is the regulation of off premises signs. And, um, that's a big deal because the regulation of off premises signs, yes. So there was just, uh, you know, a lot of, a lot of contention aga- regarding actual property owners, businesses being located where the signs were actually there. And, um, the city of Austin won in that case to where they were actually allowed to uh, regulate those signs that were not connected with the businesses that they were promoting. So it allowed them to, you know, those several key regulations that we saw on the previous slide, address off premises signs as well. The other kind of topic that is, uh, worth mentioning and getting into is grandfathering, which also has been termed the vested rights, um, kind of authority. Essentially what it stands for is whenever developers come with a project, the legislator has made it to where it kind of freezes in time, those regulations and those codes which they must abide by based on when their first permit is actually submitted. So in order for it to trigger, there must actually be some type of application for a permit or for the project or other type of approvals that would necessarily tell you this project is coming in, they're seeking to develop here in this property. And it's based solely on those regulations that are there at the time. It kind of became unfair to developers whenever they would get so far into their project planning and process only right before they actually get started, the city would or could change the regulations or the, um, you know, the playing field, the, the whole rules by which the game is being played and thus limit or take away what the project was intended to do under those old regulations. So this, um, vested rights statute is housed in the local government code, chapter 245. And essentially stands for that, that notion that whenever somebody, developer, property owner applies for a permit and gets that permit, that those are the regulations that they will be governed by and the project will follow at the time. Like I said, we have a comprehensive plan coming up. We have codes that are constantly being amended and revised. And we try to capture those in a time where we can address those future projects. But for those that have already started, they may be vested to the old code or that's why you see some non-conforming uses around the town. It may not be in our code or allowed right now, but it could have been an older code or another agreement or permit in which they apply for that allows them that right to still have that. There is a process and they do have expiration dates. So there are ways in which you can destroy your grandfathering or vested rights, which the legal eagles have to sometimes get in and analyze and evaluate whether or not that's actually happened. I think there might be even a application process for that. But to kind of wrap up, giving you guys a summary of what we've all covered. I know it's been a fountain of information and there's so much. I would even share this with city staff to share to you in case you want to reference back to it, just to have some high level points. But this is, this is what the Planning and Zoning Commission was bought for and, uh, you know, charged to do. Making sure the vision comes first, uh, making sure that we align not only with council, but with the other bodies that have authority and have recommendation power and say so and expertise in those parts of the, um, land use and development process. We're not expecting this board to cover all bases. We do understand that everybody has a variety of skills and, uh, specific, you know, knowledge and expertise that they're bringing to the body. But it's so hard to compass that in just one commission. That's why there are so many other boards. And, um, as I said, best results occur when things are aligned and approached comprehensively. Once those regulations start to come together and the process is smooth, then you'll start to see really good projects and ease of access to getting these projects. And you'll start to attract really, uh, some of the best and highest quality of, of works with all of this. Change is coming though. Obviously at each legislative session, I always give this a little spiel because the laws and things that we're abiding by now may be different next year. And that's just something that we have to stay on top of. It's our duty to inform you where those things change and to bring and recommend those changes, uh, whenever it's absolutely necessary. But that is the end of my presented material. Hopefully learned a little bit, if not, maybe it was just refreshed on kind of what the high level basics and fundamentals are for the P and Z commission.
Thank you, Riz. Uh, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Very informative and appreciate you answering all of our questions.
I have a request for the staff. Could you send us the dates of the meetings that I need to be at between now and the end of the year so that I don't get confused about the every other one? I mean, I got last one of the month, but I need to know what the other one of the month is gonna be. So if you could let me know, I can get it on my calendar and then I don't have a conflict.
Yeah, as soon as we have those, we'll, we'll get them out to you. It theoretically should be the second, uh, week of the month. Unless it's a, unless it's a five week month, it could be the third week.
Yeah, that's kind of what I need to know. And if you'd like, let me know prior to, a week before, it would be really helpful because I have my schedule books.
Oh, yeah, I know. Well, as soon as we get those dates kind of like hammered out, we'll get them to you.
Okay, thanks.
V I Pete. V I Pete, very. All right. Uh, all right. So Riz's got his portion done. Thank you, sir. Uh, on to item five in German. Can I get a motion?
Well, I gotta, I'm gonna say something.
Okay.
I think, you know, since we have some new members, you know, and stuff, and, uh, I haven't been around that long, but, you know, I've learned one thing about this process and I think we really need to, as a commission, understand what our place is. And the analogy I want to use on this is like being a conductor on a train. I don't know if everybody's ever heard this or not, but conductor does not tell you how fast the train can go. It doesn't tell you, he can't tell you which stop or go. But let it jump the tracks and see who catches heck, you know, that's, that's, and that's who we are. We are the conductor of this train. We are here for, I don't wanna say political cover, but it's pretty close to that, to the point where everything that we do is really to clean up or massage or straighten up or fix anything that's, that staff brings to us before it goes to the council. And that's our job is to try to do that. Now, whatever it is, you know, is, but in reality, you know, we do not make policies. We do not make, you know, we can't, um, make code or anything to do with it. All we can do is suggest and we're a suggestive body. Where the P and, you know, the other port I'm on, we can pretty much do what we want to do, but still yet we need to understand our, our position and, and, and I think we make the, the meetings go a lot faster, a lot cleaner and things like that. If everybody really understood, you know, what our job is and isn't. Cause there's a lot of things that I've seen in the short time I've been here is, is the processes uh, are not clear enough sometimes for us. Uh, it gives us an idea where we can make policy. We cannot, you know? And that's what I just wanted to point out to everybody to truly understand that. We have a function and I'm saying we're not functionless. I'm just saying that we need to really understand that. It would be very helpful from time to time for you us to remind us of that and what it is, you know, that we do and cannot do. Cause that's all I can say. Another thing, I had one, one other thing. I'd like to make a motion to.
Oh, look at you, look at you. We got a motion. Do we have a second? We got a motion and a second from the active group on the end. Thank you, guys. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good night, everyone. Good night, Bashrop. Thank you.